Yep. Okay, welcome everybody to the Tuesday, December 10th Board of Education Regular Business Meeting. May I please have a motion to call the Regular Business Meeting to order?
So moved.
So moved. Linda, second. Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And may I please have a motion to move into Executive Session for the purpose of discussing matters leading to the discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person, please. So moved. Carol, second. Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll be back. All right, may I please have a motion to move out of Executive Session and back into Public Session, please. So moved. Carol, second. Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and a motion to approve tonight's agenda, please.
So moved.
So moved. Linda, second. Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
And with that, we have our liaisons.
Right. Rock, paper, scissors.
It's my favorite part.
Alrighty, are we going today?
Yeah.
Rock, paper, scissors. I don't think I won a single one yet.
I'm just pretty good at rock, paper, scissors. I throw the, I throw scissors every time.
I'm so bad. Do you want me to start?
Yeah, go on.
Okay, okay. Happy holidays, everyone. December is my favorite month. I turn into Buddy the Elf, the whole... I'm just so excited for Christmas. Um, December has been such a busy month already for Thomas, but um, the biggest thing is like concerts and music events, and this past Thursday kicked it off with some jazz music and some choir music, and we have more concerts this Thursday and Friday, which I'll be in both, which is awesome. And this Friday is actually the only concert of the year that combines Schrader and Thomas because of show choir, and they have auditioned acts from both schools. And this year we're performing with Clem North, which will be so much fun. I'm so excited. And um, finally, we have a concert next Thursday, which is the 19th, which will end the month of concerts. And at every single one of these performances, Tri-M is hosting a toiletry drive um, for Willow, the organization of domestic grounds, and we have like toothbrushes, toothpaste, all like the necessary items. And yeah, um, Conference Allstate happened this past weekend, and Thomas had some wonderful musicians representing: Michaela R., Molly S., Mateo S., Bobby L., Mara F., and I was an alternate for Jazz. And everyone had such a positive weekend. Apparently, it was like 20 hours of singing, so go them, and all the performances were wonderful, I heard. And that's all for me, and now to Naya.
Hi, everyone. And like Jocelyn said, happy holidays. Um, getting into December, the Student Council organized a celebration of this winter season with an ice skating night on December, uh, well, they will be, on December 12th, which has free entry to all Thomas students. And thankfully, the snow is deciding to work with us and actually make it feel like winter um, outside our windows, so that's a good view. Um, sports are also going fantastic for Thomas. The boys' basketball team won their first win of the season against Sutherland. The newly added girls' hockey and wrestling teams are also off to a start, and I have personally seen so many girls talking about their appreciation to have these teams available and compete in a sport that has previously not been available, that, that has previously only been available for men. And tonight, the girls' basketball team is playing their first game as well. These students are dedicated and talented, and we wish them so much success, and special good luck to the girls' basketball team playing tonight. Um, and also, which was announced, was, were the Titans of the Month. Um, these students include Jeffrey R., Elise R., Emma R., Grace G., and Ms., and then the teacher is Ms. Prindle. We are all so proud of these Titans for really shining this month.
So at Schrader, um, I know our students are super excited for the, the play with the Clem North kids, too.
I'm fired up.
Um, and in addition to that, students from Mr. Feodor's class, he teaches earth science, um, brought in a bunch of food items, 236 food items, to give to the Mount Hope Thanksgiving Donation Drive. Um, it was just really great to see all the students' like willingness to help. I know a lot of my classes did it, too. It was just really nice to see. Uh, the Career and Financial Management students participated in mock interviews with local employers like First Child, Child's First Care, childcare, sorry, Regman's, the YMCA, and they all volunteered to assist the students with such a valuable real-world experience. Um, in addition, Ms. Goodsell's Enriched Earth and Science classes went to, wrote books about the solar system and read them to the pre-K kids at Schrader. I know the um, the kids really had a good time with that. Uh, winter sports have started, so sports teams are back in the gym, which is always nice to see. Uh, Warrior's Giving is going on now, and the students are taking donations to help uh, those in need during this holiday season, and also the Pirate Toy Fund, uh, Donation Drive started, too. And lastly, um, I was talking to Mr. Marcello, who works within our 1211 program at Schrader, and he just wanted to give a shout-out and some thanks to all the teachers, staff, and students that help out with our intellectually disabled kids. Uh, some of those teachers are Mr. Peck, Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Ackler, Mr. Golden, Ms. Yltowski, Ms. Wolf, Ms. Samotello, Mr. Millman, Ms. Holly, Ms. Striggi, Ms. Peters, and Ms. Daley. The connections that these students have been making with these teachers is truly amazing and has had such a huge positive impact in their lives, and the learning experiences that they have with our Unified Bowling, Unified Basketball, and our Library Cafe has really just made them feel a big part of our community, which is huge. Thank you, guys.
Happy holidays!
Thank you, you too.
Hi, Joan.
Hi, Joanie.
Love to keep it up there.
Okay, the spirit is out. These liaisons represent so much of what we do and who we are. We can't thank them enough. Our members continue, our WTA members, continue to provide opportunities for our students to do some wonderful giving this holiday season. Our first graders are encouraged on World Kindness Day. They hung up a great bulletin board and reminded people of the little things we can do, and when you post it, you share and give ideas to other, so it just spreads in ways we just continue to count on as adults. Our visitors, um, entail doctors coming to elementary schools, visiting and talking about the human body, creating games with our students, no matter what the age. We had Bren Baltaklan come to one of our elementary stu-, uh, one of our elementary buildings. I will send you a link to his artwork that he inspired, and not only came for one day, he came for three days in a row, worked outside the classrooms, and created a collaborative four murals, I believe were done by the end of the time he was there. In, in progress, I want to get over there to see those. Uh, they are extremely, know that those things cannot happen without the PTS side. All levels, we see some rising costs, and we know that. So at all of our elementary, both our middle, both our high schools, have taken food insecurities to a different level. They've partnered up with Emmanuel, dropping off boxes, continue to do so. Also being packed, our meals for the two-week break. Over nine meals will be packed, put in coolers, and dispersed to those in need. We have hundreds, literally hundreds, of gifts that were bought throughout the district, from students, from WTA members, from, we know you do as well. It is a top-down project, but when you get the emails, when you ask, literally, I think our number is coming close to a thousand of what we have done in the 11 buildings. AP classes, last year they dispersed a really cool question about what it takes to have a successful life. Given reflection and feedback from students, they rephrased it to what wisdom do we need to know to make a happy and fulfilled life for ourselves? They created podcasts, they created audio versions, they created art, whatever it is that they needed to do to get their message and their learning across, they did it, and then they shared it for two days. We all know that takes a lot of courage. Our goal students, they continue to partner with Unity, they take them shopping, they go to the mall, just hanging out with them. I hope it's around when I become that age. I do. Our owl students created a project where they are not just being part of giving to our community with two legs, but our furry creatures. They have adopted and are collecting. I will send that an email to you guys, because that collection is next couple of days, and they are collecting for, um, still, the furry animal shelter of in-need animals. Peanut Butter's on the list. It's what they called, researched, it's awesome. Our thank-yous. This time, our thank-yous entail from students: Dear the teachers, I promised I wouldn't read them. Once again, I loved this field trip, and it was very fun. My favorite part was walking near the lakes and the rivers. I would love to have another field trip with you guys. These are all handwritten, too. An exceptional teacher is one who is creative, kind, supportive, understanding, patient, open-minded, compassionate, flexible, knowledgeable, and fun. When I think of you and all the ways you helped me and my peers in middle school, every single one of these characteristics comes to mind. I can't thank you enough for the impact you had on my life. It is teachers like you who inspired me to choose this path and strive to make a difference in my own future students' lives, hoping we hire this person. This went to a middle school teacher that is from a senior in high school, and a senior in college. High school teacher received: "So funny, at dinner last night, your name came up. I asked what the thing was that happened at school today, and instead of the usual, normal, age-appropriate teenage shrug, and the word 'nothing,' I got, wow, this really cool stuff going on in English, this theme work on two short stories. I can't believe how much short stories are cool, because there's so much packed into such little words, such few words." Our WTA, like everyone else is human, like our spirit is there, we also experience tragedy. And when that hurt comes, and it is felt by an entire community, we know that we will still be there, day in, day out, no matter how many years of experience, how many months of experience. We are there, and we know you are there. Thank you.
Thanks, Joanie.
Thanks, Joan. All right, that brings us to Superintendent's Report.
All right, I'm gonna invite some friends to come on up. Mrs. Burns and Mrs. Fenton, if you could come. Mrs. Doyle and Mrs. Safe, if you guys all want to take your fun places up here. I'll start. I've got a couple updates, and uh, if you guys want to just join, and then we'll go, I'll kick it over to you in just a second. All right, uh, my first. I'd like to begin tonight by recognizing a special group of students and staff members are Webster Thomas Titan Scholars. This group was recently featured on a News 8 WROC Generation Rock segment for their service efforts locally and globally. Generation Rock highlights outstanding youth projects, advocacy, and community service projects. The Titan Scholar Curriculum Program teaches emotional, emotional connection through service. Its purpose is to, and I quote, "to actively engage students in meaningful, sustainable service learning through individual and group projects, gaining a better understanding of local and global needs through education and action," end quote. The scholars participate in several projects throughout the year, serving the Rochester community with an international trip planned later this month, uh, and they are an inspiring group who show commitment to citizenship throughout their service. And I know that they've done just so much at Thomas and throughout our district. Uh, next, with the support of our, you've heard a little bit about this, I'm just gonna go into a little more detail, but with the support of our amazing and dedicated staff, our students continue to thrive, and I would like to congratulate six Webster musicians plus three alternates who were chosen from nearly 5,500 auditions across 15 regions of New York State to perform at the New York State School Music Association Conference, which was held here in Rochester, by the way. Students auditioned for this honor at NISM SOLO and Ensemble Fest last spring, but way to go, Justin C., Nathan F., Raphael O., Michaela R., Mara F., Jocelyn H., Mateo S., Robert L., and Molly S. And again, we also had an opportunity to go down and visit the conference because it was here in Rochester and see our student-parent band in action, and that was wonderful as well. And also uh, some presentations from a couple of our own educators, which was a pretty cool conference. On Monday, November 25th, just before Thanksgiving, Spry hosted their Career Day for our eighth-grade students. You're seeing some pictures up on the screen there, but we want to thank our staff at Spry, as well as the community members who volunteered their time to share this, their experience with our students. And I know that Mrs. Safe is actually gonna talk a little bit more about this in a minute, so I'll let her take it from here. And then, before I turn it over to our guest, though, I do want to share one more opportunity for celebration. You hopefully have seen, but Webster CSD, we are all so proud to announce that the New York State Athletic Administrators Association has named Sean Striggi the Chapter Five Athletic Administrator of the Year. Reminder, he's a, he's a 25-year veteran here of Webster CSD. He was a teacher, he was a coach, he was an assistant principal, and now he's our Athletic Director for Health, Physical Education, Athletics on the Schrader side. So we congratulate Sean and thank him for everything he does for our students and for our community. That is such a cool honor, and I know how hard he works. So with that, now we're gonna hear all kinds of other great things that are going on in our buildings and in our programs. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Doyle.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jill Doyle, Principal at Plank South. Great to see you.
Thank you, Paul.
All right, so tonight I, let me grab this mouse. I will be speaking to, hang on, now I gotta find where I am. There we go. To Board Goal Number Two, and I'm specifically gonna talk about its connection to Plank South and how we make sure that our students have an impact on our building culture. And actually, when we had our board visit um, in November, a few of you got to meet some of our Student Council members, as we charge them with being the tour guides throughout, so one way for them to show their leadership. Um, so we started a Student Council at Plank South last year, and there's a few reasons why. I know that they've existed in the secondary level, but it was new for us. Um, so a few of the reasons why, we did a fifth-grade exit survey the year prior, and we wanted to get some feedback from our students around what makes things South memorable and what helped them feel a sense of belonging. And through that survey, a lot of the responses were geared towards having responsibilities such as classroom jobs, having opportunities to be able to share their um, opinions and their ideas in a direct way with either Mary-Kate Wilbert and I, or their teachers. And there was also a strong response around having those connections and relationships that are established in clubs. We don't have too, too many at the elementary level, but this was a way of starting to think about having one. We also do a student belonging survey with questions around, do you have an adult, trusted adult in the building? Do you have friends? And what are some ways that if you don't have those things, you think that they could be developed? And again, there was that idea around having something that they belonged to. Um, and then the student voice and choice, especially our fifth graders, we have a lot of students with some strong opinions that like to be able to come to us to say, here's some things that we think you could do better. So why can't we wear hats in school every day? And why is it that pizza's not on the menu every day? And why do we have assigned seats in the cafeteria? And so creating a Student Council created an avenue where kids could, on a regular basis, have the ability to come to us as leaders, and then also to be charged with listening to their peers and gathering their ideas. So that's how we got to developing the Student Council. I'm not doing really well with those guys. So you know, skipped a slide. Uh, maybe I didn't. Okay, so. I'm just gonna have you do this. He had that coordination. I was a soccer player, it was never, never anything he needed to use, so he hasn't. Um, so as we went out to seek students that wanted to be a part of our Student Council, we met in September with third, fourth, and fifth graders, shared with them the responsibilities, so making sure that um, they knew that their collective voice that was coming to us, they needed to be able to listen to their peers as other stakeholders in our building. We wanted to think about way, things that we were celebrating in Plank South, and then other areas of growth, um, and we really wanted them to support us in our school culture committee, which is the staff members, to work collaboratively, to put together some things for all of our building. So the students have the responsibility of meeting monthly um, as a whole group, and then our grade-level leaders have additional meetings as well. All right, Erin, we're gonna go to our next one. See? It's not as easy as it looks, if you look right there. So we had a total of 142 students that applied to be a part of the Student Council, and from that, our mental health team, our admin team, and our teachers really took a look at not only which students are natural leaders that we knew would be able to, you know, work alongside of one another and really be able to come to consensus and collaborate, but we also thought about those students that needed leadership opportunities to view themselves in a different way, and hopefully help to shape their behaviors in a way that um, really would allow them to kind of proceed down a different path than they had been before. So we were really selective about how we determined who was gonna make up this Student Council, but we also, I mean, we have three grade-level reps and 13 class reps, so that's not huge. So how do we get more student voice? Is those students are also charged with going to their buddy classes in K-2 and being able to um, listen to them. And then we're also trying to have these students, starting in January, bring a classmate to the meeting, so that way if we have a fifth-grade meeting, then we're having double the amount of students there. Uh, so again, just trying to find new ways to get kids involved and feeling as though they belong at Plank South. Um, so here's just some ways in the very beginning of the year that we've been able to have these students influence our culture. They supported us in making decisions for Red Ribbon Week around how we were going to support all students knowing about healthy habits, and so along with having a daily theme, we also had information that was shared on our morning show, and activities that um, they suggested classroom teachers consider doing with the students. They selected the book that we were going to read for World Kindness Day, which was a little spot of reading, and we bought that for each of the classes, and then again, they came up with what is going to be the learning task for students or the application to it, and we created a wall outside of our library. Those students, along with others, helped us to put it up. Um, the picture that's in the middle of some yoga there, that's one of our school-wide morning meetings. So in our intermediate morning meeting, we have students help to lead some of those activities, but we also allow them to give their say into what it is that we're doing. So the structure that we file in the morning meeting is the same as what happens in the classroom, but we want them to have a voice in saying, okay, this is what, we have themes that connect to Lions Quest, so what can we do that's gonna help students focus on, for our last one, it was around understanding emotions and how to um, have strategies for different emotions. And so they came up with some ideas that we applied into that, and we've got our countdown to holiday break that we're going full speed ahead with right now that they gave input. Um, and upcoming, there's a, there's an event that we had a few years ago, it was a cereal domino event, where we collected cereal boxes, we did dominos through the whole school. And our current fifth graders, I don't think will move to middle school if we don't repeat that, so there's a very strong voice coming from fifth grade that that must be repeated. Um, and they're also helping us to make decisions about our Read Around the World Night and which countries we're going to be showcasing, and what are going to be the different ways that we help students to learn about different traditions and holidays in different countries. And then, lastly, um, just a few different things that students have said about why it's important to be a student leader. So they all have their different opinions, but it kind of boils down to um, them really feeling like they are contributing, and it is because they are. We value those kids. Our meetings are super fun, and we've got some staff that are seeing the work that they're doing, and they want to be a part of the meetings as well, so we're trying to figure out how we can either provide coverage or schedule them at times, or we could get even more adults to be a part of the work.
That's great.
Any questions?
Thank you so much, Mrs. Doyle. I know, and I would just echo that when we were there for the visit, uh, we saw that all in action. We were able to talk to the kids, we were able to ask them questions, and oh my gosh, their insights are amazing. They really are. So much appreciated. And I apologize, when I introduced all of you, I never really introduced any of your positions. Mrs. Doyle is the Principal of Plank South, as we all know. Now we'll move over to Mrs. Safe, who is also gonna do our secondary update. She is our Goal Administrator for our Goal Program. So, Mrs. Safe.
Good evening, everybody. Um, are you gonna click for me, too? Somebody's gotta be a clicker. I appreciate it. Um, you can go on to the next slide. Um, I'm gonna start out with Schrader. Obviously, um, Brian talked a little bit about this, but once again, we're talking about including kids in the community and all the things that they do that kind of affect their interests, and one of the things that was very fulfilling for our kids at Schrader this year was the Warrior Service Scholars, and they went to Never Say Never Stables at Maple Drive in Webster, and helped them clean up um, the grounds around the stable. They also learned a lot about taking care of animals, and helped to change, helped the, the workers there to really lighten the load for what they were doing. Um, and they, it was also an amazing program that's in our community that I don't think many people know about. So I think that we, we hear about Heritage Stables, I haven't heard of Never Say Never Stables, and I think it's a, a great thing to expand the interests, so. Mr. Prizzy's fourth-grade calc class organized their own Friendsgiving to celebrate their class, which I think is pretty incredible, that they came together that much as a class of pre-calc students, um, and wanted to have that celebration on the 26th. Um, we also have our, celebrating our math league, uh, that came up really with some great scores, especially in the individuals, but they came in, uh, they're second in the competition, uh, second in their competition this year, and they had Lance K. and Allison K. earn perfect individual scores in their categories. So 28 schools participated countywide, and 15 schools in Division One. So Schrader placed seventh in the division and scored above all schools in Division Two, so pretty incredible stuff there. And um, as you see in the center of the slide, Sean Striggi, that is, he, he deserves every ounce of it. He is great. I mean, I can speak from Goal and his amazing efforts to include Goal kids on teams and making sure they're comfortable and, and everything as well, but he does just an excellent job in the athletic office, so. Um, I'm gonna go on to the Thomas report. A little bit of this has been talked about, but one of the things that you see right there in the middle is kindness post-its that were done during Thanksgiving, where the students left notes of kindness, and it's right there in the cafeteria where everybody can see it. Um, you talked a little about the news article about the Service Scholars. They're also inviting graduates to come back for the trip to the Dominican Republic and, and participate again if they've already have, or if they haven't to do that. I thought that was pretty incredible. Um, they're heading into December, and obviously the sport, winter sports are beginning, as you can see, um, and they're looking forward to the, uh, really just seeing the kids enjoy each other's competitions and cheer each other on. So, um, that's the report from Thomas. Next, I believe, is my Goal thing, and thank you for coming, Brian and Erin and Linda. Uh, they came for a learning walk. We started off at the Tutoring Center to get the coffee cart there. We weren't able to do it in November, and then they came over to Goal for a learning walk, so that was great. And the kids thanked you in the community meeting for coming into their classes, so. So, we started off November with Dia de la Mortis, which is the ofrenda in the middle. And it's interesting, because it started in Spanish class and in studio art class, but so many kids brought in pictures of loved ones that they, you know, really wanted to honor and revered. And it stayed up much longer than most ofrendas will, okay? And then, we had kids talking about how they helped their abuela set up their ofrendas when that, the time comes of the year, and just so many great things from every grade level. As soon as it went up and they saw a few things, they kept adding stuff, and it was just, it was really great. We had our annual Goals Giving, and you can see there, there's a picture of all the kids lined up. That's them waiting to go get their turkey and everything. And you can see that our families really get involved with this. All those desserts, we did not make one of those desserts. There were two full tables of desserts that the parents brought in. Those kids were sugared up. By the end of the day, for sure. But, and they took plates of them home, too. And they, we had kids taking turkey home with them and everything. My dad likes turkey, and my mom doesn't make it. Can I take some? I'm like, sure, sure thing. So, they had a great time. They loved that day, and the staff loves the day. And we had our sentries come down. We had custodians come down and join us, and the admin from Schrader came down. So, it was a great day overall. You see our Pinewood Derby. That's the track there, and the kids built the track, and then they build their Pinewood Derby cars, and we have a competition. And that's just something that I think we had a kid who liked doing it in Boy Scouts, and Mr. Holly and Mr. Close said, that's physics, that's engineering, we'll do it. So, they really listened to what, one of the things Jill said was voice and choice, and the teachers in Goal really do listen to what the kids want and want to do. And you can see a picture of our community meeting over there underneath the Goals Giving piece of bark, I guess it is, up there. But we have a community meeting every Monday, so the kids know what's happening throughout the week, so there's no surprises. Goal kids do not like surprises. And that one, they were getting ready for what Joni talked about. We took the Unity residents to the mall and helped them shop for Christmas. And one of the residents that was with our seniors was looking at a pair of pajama bottoms, oddly, and the seniors all pitched in and bought those pajama bottoms for her. And so, it was really very heartwarming. They were so proud of themselves, and they had so much fun with the residents. So, a great, great month in Goal and looking forward to the next two weeks in Goal before Christmas, so. Okay, so, High School Owl has been really working on some meaningful learning opportunities right there in the middle. Their forensics class was doing some chalk drawings of, I guess, a victim? And they did a really cool thing, is they did the grid search. Now, they weren't looking for real evidence, they were looking for candy, but they did a full grid search, just the way the police would do, and the kids really enjoyed that. And they really enjoyed the hands-on projects, obviously, too. They had an opportunity to bring a puppy in, so they could learn more about how to take care of animals and also, you know, just gave them a little break from the learning that was going on. And it gave them some time to be together and just experience that. For Thanksgiving, they did a pie party. So, they all brought in and helped to make pies, and they all enjoyed that as kind of their celebration before they broke for Thanksgiving. So, next is Spry. Chris Callahan shared about Career Day. I think he's, 41 community presenters came in with a diverse group of different things that the students could learn about and really making it so it really dovetailed with the course selection process for eighth graders. So, really meaningful in terms of timing and in some things to think about for those kids as they move into high school. So, caring and sharing was the theme for Willink, and you have the Willink students that were recognized by staff up there, and that happens every month. And that is for, they go above and beyond in the essential skills, Webster's Essential Skills. So, eight students were recognized for the responsible decision-making, and that also is one of our Castle Core competencies. So, they're taking a lot of the SEL stuff that we've been working through and incorporating it into that recognition as well. They had a Candygram fundraiser to help provide gifts and food for families in need, specifically Willink families. And Brian Powers wanted to make sure that he thanked the entire Willink and Webster communities for helping donate over 900 items, including gifts and meal baskets to our families. That's pretty incredible. And last, but certainly not least, is Owl Middle. And Owl Middle, they live board goal number two every day. So, they have their pictures of students are leading their morning meetings, okay? A group of students during what they call intervention time to get their needed movement, and they have come up with some team sports to do and incorporating that movement time into their PE classes. And they had a Friendsgiving feast as well. That's a good-looking plate right there at the bottom. And what they did for their feast was they researched all different cultural foods and made those foods together, and then they had their feast. So, they included everybody's favorites, and it was a huge hit. And they also did a kindness challenge, very similar to what Thomas did, and they're gonna continue that for the next three weeks. And they're gonna have some amazing prizes for the students that are the most kind to others. So, lots of good stuff going on in the secondary. Any questions?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now, we have Mrs. Burns and Mrs. Fenton, our Wonder Care co-directors, to talk a little bit about the Wonder Care program.
Don't you do that. I jinxed myself. So, thank you for having us. We're excited. If you can believe it, six years ago was the very first inauguration, or what have you, the inaugural year of Wonder Care. So, we just, we kind of thought about that a little bit. And in 2019, when we first opened, we had 626 unique students that attended Wonder Care, and today, we have 782 unique students. So, you can see we're continually growing, which is exciting. As far as the employees, in 2019, 20, we had 117 employees, and this year, we have 146. So, we're excited to see the growth and being able to get and serve more of the Webster children and families. So, we talked about the six years, and that means that those kids that were kindergartners in 2019 are now fifth graders. So, like, that's a huge thing, and we got to thinking, we're like, oh, my gosh, these kids have, these families have trusted with us throughout their entire elementary years. So, we decided to kind of realize that this is something that we need to recognize these families for, right? Like, so they stuck with us for these six years. This is great. They love us, we love them. So, you can see that top logo, and we're kind of wearing these shirts, too. These are, these were given to all of our students that have been with us for that since 2019. So, that's 72 students and then also 24 employees. So, that many students and employees have stuck with us through, since 2019, and we all know the things that went through the last six years, and they stuck around with us, so we're really excited about that. So, the top logo, nobody else will ever have. It's an original, they're original, the OGs. So, and then, moving forward, we're gonna continue this, you know, throughout the years to come, and then, other kids that make this will become part of our Hexagon Club. So, we're really excited about that. So, this is just some of the pictures. You can see the kids got tie-dyes, and, you know, the fifth graders, as we all know, it's kind of hit or miss. Like, they're excited about the cereal domino thing, but then sometimes they're like, hmm. And I was like, oh, are they gonna be excited about these T-shirts? And I'm telling you, I was at, we were both at a lot of our schools when they were giving them, and every single fifth grader was pumped, and it was, it was just, because, you know, you kind of cringe, you're like, oh, please don't, please don't ruin this for everybody. But then, you know, and then you see, like, there was third and second graders coming up and be like, if I stay until fifth grade, do I get that shirt? And we're like, yes, you do. So, it was just really great. And you can see, we've got some of the staff that were here as well. And then, the really cool thing is we were able to kind of dig back, and all these pictures up here are kids of these actual, when they were in kindergarten. So, thank goodness for Facebook. We could dial it back to 2019 and find them. But, so, we're really excited about that and that we were able to, you know, those 72 kids and really those 24 staff as well. And Kristen's gonna kind of talk a little bit about that.
Oh, no, thank you. So, I, whoa, sorry. I wanted to quickly just talk about our high school staff. So, we employ teachers, teacher A's, TAs. We have college kids who come to work for us. We also have high school students who work for us, and we always have, we call them junior site assistants. However, this year, Erin and I always interview, you know, mid-August, and we had a group from Schrader kids who have recruited. Like, I have never seen humans recruit. Every day, I mean, I would, I'm interviewing these kids, I'm like, how many more interviews can I have? Every day, we get a new applicant of a high school staff. So, we've never had this many kids really talk up the program to their peers. And I also kind of had this recognition as we were talking about, you know, Erin and I live in the elementary world, but they're also students of Webster, too, you know? And to see them work and grow with us, and a lot of them are on path to being teachers. So, it's like, it's a really great experience for them. So, we have 25, oop, you went, she likes to click too fast for me sometimes. We have 25 high school students, so those are the numbers. I don't have one at Duett, but I do have a West Rondiquay. I know that doesn't, but we do have a lot at, you know, we usually go where the need is, but you can click, click. So, these are just some of the stuff that the high school kids had said. I asked them why they chose to work at Wonder Care over other jobs that they could possibly be doing as high school staff. And the things that struck, stuck out for us, and we do use this when we also recruit, too, is one, no nights or weekends. You know, especially as a student, to be able to get home and get their homework done and be able to do stuff on the weekends. Consistent and flexible scheduling. Usually, if they tell us, I work Monday, Tuesday, Friday, they work Monday, Tuesday, Friday, unless we ask them to work an extra day every once in a while. But it also allows time for, you know, extracurricular activities and schoolwork and sports if they're in them. I won't read that whole quote, but this one student of Thomas responded back to the email, and it really struck me as sometimes, when you're in elementary school, you know, it wasn't the best experience for her as a student, you know, because of the academic rigor. But it really just kind of struck me in what she said about working at Wonder Care and how she had wished she had that experience as a student, as an elementary student. And then, these are just a couple of other things they said that they get to do while they're on the clock. So, it's pretty funny, because both of our children, mine and Erin's, have been up on this board, up on these meetings tonight. So, Erin's two sons work for me at Clump South. One of them is a junior in high school, and my son was just up on the Willink one. So, it's kind of a little full circle for us right now.
That's wonderful.
Were you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Well, and the cool part about those 25 is maybe they might be thinking about education.
We push them very hard.
Which I'm really excited about. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. So, obviously, tonight's theme was gratefulness and giving, and all the examples that the four of you shared were wonderful, and thank you so much. And thank you, though, for all of your leadership. Really appreciate it. And that ends my report for the night. So, thank you very much. All right, we're gonna throw a quick audible, if it's okay with everybody here. We're gonna switch B and C on the agenda, and if we could ask Mr. McAtee and Mr. Roller, if the two of you could come up really quick, and we'll do that, because that only should be about three or four minutes. And then, we'll get to our MTSS in just a second. And actually, I'm gonna turn it over to Erin first, sorry.
So, we're excited to have Jim and Michael here with us tonight. They're gonna talk about two new courses that we are proposing for our students for next fall. And it sounds like a really easy thing to do, to come up with a course idea and then just go with it, except it really isn't that easy. So, they, these two have worked for over a year, probably closer to 18 months, to develop courses that are gonna go in the course catalog this fall. So, we've asked them to come to give you an overview of what the course is, who can take it, and why it's relevant to our students right now. And I appreciate their perseverance in working through this process, because it was not easy. They've worked through lots of layers, including all of the members of their departments. So, thanks for being here tonight to tell us about the courses.
All right. So, I'm gonna go first. And she gave us a time limit of two minutes or less.
I did.
So, I timed mine. You can see my margins. So, I'm here tonight to share about a new elective course for grades nine through 12 titled, "Understanding Music Past and Present." It's a year-long, one-credit course that will offer a unique opportunity to complement the traditional performance ensemble experience that many of our students take while embarking on a journey through time, studying music from various eras, cultures, and perspectives. After some initial teacher-led exploration, students will then self-guide through a menu of options that they can choose from. And that includes potentially researching the inspirations of a favorite composer's life and their works. They could conduct an in-depth analysis of symphony or masterwork. They could prepare a mini-recital with a survey of works describing, describing those works to enhance their own music literacy, and they can even create a modern arrangement or composition in the style of their chosen era, utilizing traditional notation or digital audio workstations. If I were to guess, I think many of our students would lean to that arrangement, composition, editing, software kind of side of things. Wanting to ensure that all of our grade levels could access the course, it's flexible enough to allow our students to bring their own personal backgrounds and musical context to the class. Gaining a little perspective from our students, we did have a survey of Thomas music students where we have a teacher who is really behind this class. Survey all the music students at Thomas, and 60% of them said that if they could fit it into their high school sequence, then they'd be interested in the content that was included within the class. So, we believe that Understanding Music Past and Present can enhance our catalog of choices that, again, regularly includes our performance ensembles, but also Music Theory I, AP Music Theory, and in alternating years, Music Plugged In. Students can fulfill their basic graduation requirement and include it in credits leading up to the five-credit sequence in the arts, and we just feel as though the approach of this class will also provide our students with the opportunity to better appreciate and understand not only the music, but the people around them today and in their future.
Thank you. Thanks, Michael.
How many of you sat in math class and said, when am I gonna use this?
Not me.
If you said that was you, then I think I've got a class for you. As math teachers, we wanted to have a better answer to that question, too. After convening as a group and going over ways to help our program meet our student needs, our math electives committee looked into adding an Intro to Data Analytics course. Adding a course based on statistical reasoning and sports would bring significant benefits to our program, aligning with both academic goals and student interests. This course leverages the engaging context of sports to teach foundational principles of statistics, probability, and data analysis, skills that are increasingly important in today's data-driven world. This new elective course would cover the application of statistical methods to analyze sports data, teaching students how to interpret performances, evaluate strategies, and make informed decisions based on data from various sports, utilizing concepts like probability, sampling, correlation, regression, and hypothesis testing to gain insights into athletic performance and team dynamics, often incorporating real-world examples and hands-on analysis exercises. We hope to teach problem-solving, the problem-solving framework of asking questions, collecting data, analyzing that data, and making conclusions. And an unintended consequence of this is it also helps to support the work that we do in the Statistics and Algebra II and AP Statistics. Any questions?
Go ahead.
I have a question. Are these, is this like new to the area, these courses? Because I've never heard of them. Are any other districts doing, so you guys just came, no, I mean, it sounds like I might have liked math if.
I'll say, at least from my selfish lens, when I was teaching, lots of times, kids would have a conversation when we're doing statistics, and you'd cite an example, and you'd be like, hey, you know, this player scored this many points. And then, kids would start arguing over who the better player was. And so, one night, we sat, and I said, you know what? Instead of, the homework tonight is to go through and just tell me who the best person, who do you think the best athlete it is and why? And like, I'm older, so I'm thinking in my head, like, maybe Tiger Woods, Michael Jordan, someone will come back. They came back with all these statistics, but I needed to do the assignment, too. And so, then, when I came back, I was... And so then, when I came back, I was like, wow, they're going over like LeBron James and Kobe Bryant and all these other players, and even the ones I thought that were good. Who here has heard of Katie Ledecky?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So if you look, like, this makes you actually want to not do what she does. She swims the 800 meters. I actually had to look it up. She doesn't have the world record. She doesn't even have the top five times. She doesn't have the top 10 times. She has the top 23 times swimming the 800 meters.
Oh, my God.
Like, it's almost, when you watch it on TV, she finishes, gets out of the pool, and looks and has to wait for the other people to go through and finish what she's doing. That level of dominance statistically is almost unheard of in an Olympic-level sport. And it does a great service to our kids to be able to say, yeah, you know, the data that you're looking at has actual consequences, and data is telling you a story. So you might think Tiger Woods is pretty good, but he's got nothing on Katie Ledecky. And, you know, you might think that, you know, Kobe Bryant or LeBron James, whoever else, had a great game. They, they're horrible compared to Katie. And it was having, teaching kids to do that data analytics stuff. We also have people in our program whose kids, this is an emerging field, like most colleges are trying to add it now. If you had kids that went to school five years ago, this did not exist. We reached out also to try to get a course like this through Syracuse University Project Advance. They're actually too busy to help us out, but their high school has this, as a major department member, has a child who went through that program and worked for the Yankees and now is working with the Boston's, no, the Buffalo Sabres, I believe. But it is, if you're looking to make money, this is a field, you will find a job right away, they will recruit you while you're in school, and it's looking at data sets, making conclusions based on that data.
Yeah. I, I struggled with statistics, because I couldn't relate it to anything.
Because it probably didn't mean all that much, and they used really dry, boring examples. And this is hopefully going to help things become, come to life for our students.
Thank you.
The only advice I'd give is make sure you include the generation of data. My son, my son's studying data analytics, and the first class he took was coding, and it turned him right off to it.
So one of the things that we noticed was that, I want to say, Python is like emerging computer science language, and a lot of the data analytics programs that we worked with actually feed in and have that as like, you kind of want this as some, they're not gonna say it's a prerequisite, but as a prerequisite. And that's something that we can touch on as well.
Yeah. For, I know for NRIT, I was a data analytics student, and you had to know either Python, Java, or one of the languages, in order to be able to actually use the software that it takes to do things a lot easier, faster than you would on Excel. So something to ponder.
I think with both of these positions, the, or these, these courses, that it positions our students really well in a lot of things that could be coming down the way. So we aren't sure what everything exactly means with Portrait of a Graduate and Blue Ribbon Commission, and, but for a while, we've had the Individual Arts Assessment Pathway outlined in Fine Arts, that this is, just adds more to the breadth and depth of what our students can access in our programming, that we just don't necessarily always have the time for within the typical constructs of a performance class, that it's, it's the good rabbit holes, that you want to create that extra time for kids to dig into. So I'm kind of excited about that for this, and I can see the same thing, and my son wants to do some of that potentially, so.
It'll be one credit, full credit.
So yeah, I would just echo, emerging fields, both of them, great job, both of you. And again, I want to go back to what Erin said at the very beginning, this was not a light process. We don't take this process lightly. We don't bring, we don't often bring courses like this to the board, and it's an 18-month, if not more, and it's the whole department that gets involved in that concept. So thank you both for your leadership in that and presenting these and adapting to our kids.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I have a motion to approve the new courses, Understanding Music Past and Present and Statistical Reasoning in Sports. So move Jeff, second Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we'll bump back up to MTSS.
We'll go back to Erin. Oh, sorry, we're gonna go over to Robert.
Very excited to invite Emma Coleman and Zandy Tasber up to share a bit of an overview of our district-wide work in multi-tiered systems of support. I'll let Zandy and Emma get into the depths of our commitment to the work, but suffice it to say that when implemented with fidelity, MTSS is an impactful tool that can make a difference for all kids. And it's, it's work that's happening broadly, but it's always with challenge. I've watched Emma's leadership of this work in kind of getting us on the right track of it. It marries every single aspect of education and provides us a lens and tools for continued improvement. So thank you so much for that work, and I'm very excited to hear your presentation.
All right, hopefully, this is exciting as a sports statistics.
It is to me.
All right. So another theme of the night, we are also going to focus on Board Goal Two here, and specifically, that bullet, strengthen and align our multi-tiered system of support using universal and targeted resources to enable database decision-making. So essentially, tonight will be an update on where we are with that. So something that we've done over the last couple of years, Robert Francine and I worked closely together to really ensure that the district widely has a shared understanding of what MTSS is. So we'll do just a quick overview to make sure that we all have that shared understanding as well. So when you talk about MTSS, depending on what organization or what resource you look at, there's a bunch of different potential definitions, but because we're New York State, we went with NICE-Leds definition. So really, what this boils down to is that it's a data-driven, driven decision-making framework for increasing the effectiveness, efficiency, and equity of delivered instruction, rapidly identifying and responding to the needs of students, continuously improving and implementing evidence and research-based practice. So those are the things we need to have in place to have a strong MTSS system and just really to serve our students well. So you've seen this triangle, I'm sure, before a few times, but just to kind of review the characteristics of what happens in each tier. Tier one is our universal tier, so it's what every single student gets. So as Robert mentioned, it really encompasses everything, academic, social-emotional, behavior support, everything that happens in school. And it's core instruction, given that you can have differentiation as needed. Tier two would be a targeted level of support. So this is for when students don't adequately respond to tier one, so what's happening in the classroom and the school, you know, they need a little bit more, essentially. So this is kind of our targeted level. We find out what the root causes of their needs, and then we give supplemental instruction or in addition to. And then tier three is really our intensive level, so that's where we individualize things. Tier two tends to be kind of a reiteration of tier one in a lot of ways, but tier three really is designed specifically for the student. And those percentages there are the percentage of students you would typically expect to find responding to different tiers. So 80% would be responding to tier one, need nothing additional, 15% will need that targeted, and about 5% needs something really individualized. And then just the data characteristics that align with that. In tier one, we look at universal screening, so we'll talk about where we are with that. Diagnostic assessment and progress monitoring is tier two, and then individualized progress monitoring for tier three. And just wanted to put up again our Webster graphic. We've really been messaging with a shared understanding that this is all of our work, and it's in support of students. So it's not like an initiative that's happening, it's what we are doing to support our kids. All right, so quick, where are we with our current stays related to the board goals? So we wanted to strengthen and align, so what did we want to strengthen and align? Well, in the summer of 2023, we developed a partnership with AIR, or Center on MTSS. And so we had a consultant come in and lead all of our tier-one teams through a process of really evaluating where they were with these different core tenets of MTSS. What came out of that is that those top three, universal data, database decision-making, and progress monitoring were areas that we needed really kind of across the board to strengthen. And then an internal review, just kind of conversations and, you know, the discussions that we've had, research we've done within the district, showed that we needed to be more consistent with what's happening across the district. So those are the pieces we've been working on strengthening and aligning. So where are we now with all of those different pieces? So this year, super exciting, we have really universal resources in terms of data and instruction rolling out on both sides of the triangle. So a lot of work had been done last year to make sure we were ready to go with this. So I'll just kind of show you what we have in place. So on our academic side of the triangle, we are able to collect data through M-Class, so that gives benchmarking for all students K5 in literacy. This, I will say, the academics is specific to elementary literacy right now. That was, I'm sure you all know, but the place that we identified as needing the most support and where we would have kind of the biggest lift district-wide, so that's had a ton of energy. So M-Class is specific to literacy, K5, and then we are using our CKLA program for instruction. On the other side of the triangle, we have the DESSA. So this is our universal screener, and this is K12. And that provides information on where students are in terms of the different CASL competencies, which are really just the social-emotional skills that any human needs to be successful. We also have Lions Quest, which is a K12 SEL curriculum that you heard Jill mention earlier, that provides that universal instruction. And then in terms of targeted, it's M-Class also for literacy, and then we've had letters training in addition to that, that helps people kind of build in just good practices. So those are a couple of pieces there. And then in terms of the social-emotional side, the DESSA provides information for students who showed need areas on their universal screening, and Lions Quest has built in tier two as well. So just a couple of quick snapshots to show you what some of our district-level, well, district or specific-level data looks like. This was our first assessment with DESSA, so this occurred in November, just a few weeks back. And this is, again, just high-level overview of the district. But you can see, our tiers two and three really are pretty close overall across the district to where we would want to see in terms of our need for instruction. And overall, across the district, tier one is typical in strength. So we're looking pretty good there. School by school and grade by grade, things tend to fluctuate a bit, but district level, we're looking good. And then M-Class doesn't provide the same level of data, like an overview of the district, so I took out a specific grade four in a building, just to kind of show that we are also breaking down into kind of where we can see tier two to three needs and tier one needs with our grade four here. And knowing that, you know, we probably have a little bit more work to do in terms of some of the needs with literacy, but this is our first year with CKLA, and we are expecting to see some pretty significant improvements in years to come. So that's where we are with our data, that we can now analyze, make decisions about what students are moving into different tiers, and be able to just continue this, this work forward. So I am now going to turn it over to Zandy to talk about what this looks like in practice in our schools.
Thank you. I was really excited to have the opportunity to come and talk a little bit about our tier-one team at Schrader. So I'm Zandy Tasber, I'm one of the assistant principals at Schrader, and I've had the privilege of helping to lead the tier-one team over the past five years. And we've evolved a bit over the past five years. So when the tier-one team was first formed, we were really focused on PBIS and in teaching positive behaviors, so we're developing, are building CARE matrix and identifying what are those pro-social behaviors that we expect to see from students. Will you go to the next slide, Emma? And we really wanted to be data-driven as a team, so meeting monthly, we would look at our building-wide attendance data, academic data, and behavior referral data. And what we are finding is, we have a lot of information, like, we, it's very easy to pull and gather and see attendance and grades and behaviors, and it's really hard to kind of figure out the why behind a lot of it. So we're charged with using that data and identifying some high-quality, evidence-based interventions and lessons to help all students build their skills, form positive habits, develop positive behaviors. And we, we're working really hard to use that data and focus on the positive side of things. Go on to the next one. Not the other side of things. So our tier-one team, what we do is in the name, we focus on the tier-one instruction and what, what is gonna work for all of our students, what we're gonna need to give to everyone. So as a team, we don't discuss specific students, we're not focusing on behaviors that are impacting a relatively small portion of students, and we're not looking at punitive consequences. We're trying to be proactive and see what does our building as a whole need. So there's some limitations, as I said, to what that data can tell us. We have a lot of data, but when we were looking at attendance concerns, those are typically impacting 15 to 20% of students, which is certainly a big chunk of our students, and we need to be intervening, but that's, it's really not a tier-one intervention that we're looking at at that point. And with attendance, we, you have to look at what the root cause is, right? So that was, that's something that was, you know, difficult to identify. Same with behavior referrals, typically, we're looking at 5% or fewer of our students who are having behavior, significant behavior concerns that are rising to the level of an office referral, which is great, that's still a portion of our students who need support, but not really something that's rising to the tier-one level. What we were finding consistently as a team is the academics were a part where we're like, okay, we're seeing some larger numbers of students who are not passing classes or who we're seeing falling behind throughout the year. But again, without some more consistent diagnostic, screening and diagnostic, it's really challenging to know how to appropriately intervene, which is why, drum roll please, we were so excited about the DESSA universal screening and diagnostic that we were administering this year. So Emma talked a bit about that, but she said a lot of things. So I'll, I'll say again, the DESSA is a, it's a universal screening tool, and it's secondary, it's built-in diagnostic as well. And it's aligned to the CASL competencies, so it's social-emotional skills. So students take it three times a year at the high school and at the middle school, it's a self-report, where they're answering questions, and they're very quick questions, positively worded. It might be a statement, something like, I cooperate with others to solve a problem, and then a Likert scale of never, sometimes, often, and always. And that gives us a lot of information on where they fall with social-emotional skills and some really targeted areas that we can actually help intervene to where they need. So we did administer, as Emma said, the first go-round of that in November. Sounds like a long time ago, sort of feels like a long time ago. So the first week of November. So we got that data instantly, which is great, and the building tier-one team met to, earlier this month, right before Thanksgiving, to look through the initial data. And we see, if you go to the next slide, we have a big chunk of need for instruction, and then, you know, also that, that tier-one range, too. So we have some pretty well-identified needs popping up at the tier-one level within the DESSA platform. And so then the burning question comes, next one, is what are we gonna do with that? What comes next? Now we have some more targeted data, we're really excited about it, what are we gonna do? And the answer to that is, we're not totally certain yet, but we have some great ideas. So the tier-one team is meeting again next week. And what we're, what we're definitely planning at the building-wide level is, there are some really cool functions within the DESSA platform where their students have the ability to create goals for themselves based on their results and complete challenges to strengthen their skills in their targeted areas. We have already had students independently in the platform setting goals and independently agreeing to complete challenges, which just, you know, tells you something about our students and, and how, you know, many of them are poised and primed for this. So we do want to capitalize on that. The other great thing about DESSA is that it gives you building-wide recommendations for strategies, and there are lessons built right in. So it's, it's, it's not needing to reinvent the wheel, these are evidence-based and aligned to areas of need. So we're gonna be identifying places that we can give a lesson building-wide versus things that we can target to tier-two groups with our social workers and mental health team and their counseling groups and our school counselors during advisement. So we're really super excited. I would love to come back at the end of the year and tell you all the great things we've done with it, too. Any questions for me or for Emma?
I have a quick question. This chart that, on slide 17, what does typical mean, meaning they don't need?
Yeah, I guess, sure. So yeah, typical, so it's basically kind of like your bell curve or whatnot, so that would be an expected range that kids would be in. I did, when I put my slide on, I said really tier two to three is need for instruction, but there might be some kids at the lower end of typical that you might want to monitor, but generally, you're not worried if a kid's in the typical range. So it's typical, strength, and then the red is the need for instruction.
Based on some benchmark or whatever that?
Yeah, based on the DESSA screening. So in high school, they take a self-assessment, and it's 50 questions, well, I should say middle and high school, 50 questions for middle school, 55 for high school. So it's the universal screener and diagnostic together. And then in elementary, teachers take them on behalf of their students, the classroom teachers, and it's eight questions. And then if there's a need, like a flag area, then they go and do the, the full DESSA, which is, I think, 45 questions at elementary.
Cool. I'm assuming that there's some data behind the accuracy of the self-reporting? And is there ever, like, situations where you would seek collateral information?
I can speak to that a little bit, actually. So we have our first mental health department meeting post-administration tomorrow morning. So one of the things we'll talk about there and that we've been working, I have a little MTSS team assembled, so we've been working to try to meet with these tier-one teams as possible. So we've been working to try to meet with these Tier 1 teams as possible to hear about, like what are the differences? Because I didn't show, there's a ton I could show you. But there's a pretty drastic difference between middle school and high school on the self-assessment. And high school had significantly more needs. So we have been talking with our DESSA consultant about why is this? What would you expect? And she said, often you would expect to see a difference just between teacher and self-assessment. So we're trying to dig in and think about like what, you know, what was the difference? Did high schoolers take it more seriously? Because there was a little bit more internal kind of supportive of it, like they had somebody on the morning show in one of the high schools and just like a slideshow presentation that was individualized in high school, but that didn't happen at middle school. Was that a little thing that made a difference? You know, did some students click through it? We're going to do some risk verification and just kind of check for some of the higher-needs kids. But then interestingly, as we asked this question in several meetings with our DESSA consultant, about a week later, she emailed me a brief that DESSA put out that said this is actually starting to happen nationwide, that we're seeing higher need for instruction in high school than in middle school. And there's several reasons for that, like developmental stages that kids went through during COVID. They're still in the process of re-norming high school, whereas middle school is a fresh assessment. So there's a few factors, but we're definitely having some conversations and digging into just what you asked. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you both very much for your leadership. Much appreciated.
Absolutely.
All right. With that, can I have a motion to approve the instruction report as presented? So move, Michelle, second. Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. Let's see, Treasurers Report, right? Ah, there you go. Brian's up.
It's nice people are staying. So first up for the September Treasurers Report, nothing too spectacular in September to report. Just want to point out though, that the difference a lot of years is when we have capital construction going on of how much cash we have available to invest. So with very limited capital construction going on, we're being very aggressive with our investment portfolio. So I just wanted to point that out because it leaves cash on hand for us to be able to invest. That'll change in probably two fiscal years, when construction really ramps up. So it's just something I wanted to point out to you as you look through these reports on a month-to-month basis.
Questions?
Is this the sort of thing people complain about and don't understand that it has to be there? You know, when, when people, they'll say, why are they holding money?
Oh, yeah. Our, I mean, if you go back and look at history, it's like riding the roller coaster of when revenues come in and our expenditures are fairly consistent 12 months out of the year, especially 10 months out of the year with the 10-month staff. But, you know, we get chunks of money at certain times of the year and we got to keep it there to ride it out for the months where we don't get it, so.
So it's like a roller coaster ride? Yeah, okay. I just wanted to see.
It wasn't too long ago that they didn't give us a couple of those.
Right, that's true. Yeah, question.
Good, yep. All right, with that, motion to approve the September 2024 Treasurers Report as presented. So move, Linda, second. Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, some budget info.
Some budget info for you. So I just highlighted some of the important dates, really focusing in on when certain due dates are that are important to us. So February, circle it on the calendars, that's our first draft of the tax levy limit because that is due March 1st to the Comptroller. Doesn't mean we can't change it, but it's got to be submitted by the first. And then just a couple other high points of when the property tax report card is due, when the board has to officially adopt the budget is listed there as well. And then you'll notice late May vote again, May 20th, the way the calendar is falling, way Tuesday falls in April, kicks it a little later again this year. So just wanted to point those out as calendar moments to pay attention to this year.
Okay, thank you.
Kick off.
All right.
Here we go, Brad.
So our, one of our first official conversations about what's coming up next year, '25, '26, some of the early things that I wanted to report to everybody. So just going to do some state updates, maybe talk a little bit about the Rockefeller Report that came out, state aid predictions, and talk about some of the budget areas that are kind of coming into focus right now as well around benefits and pensions. So just big changes coming, some news articles from the last few months about this Rockefeller Report, about foundation aid, which is the largest single aid formula that all districts receive. And just so, what's going to happen with that? And we'll, we'll break that down a little bit. So first for us, I did a little look back. So is the state aid support going to continue? So I went back to 1819 and the blue bar is what the state allocated to us. The red bar is what the formula says we should have gotten. So if you noticed, they were separate for 1819, 1920, 2021, 2122, 2223 got a little closer together. And then 2324 was the first year that formula and what the state gave us matched since 2007, 2008, when the formula was designed. Then you realize for this year, all right, our formula allocation is slightly more than what the state did because that was the manipulation of the CPI that the governor put into the budget. So what's '25, '26 going to look like? No idea. It's my best prediction. So why is it going to be tough? But first, before we talk about why it's going to be tough, I wanted to point this out for Monroe 1 BOSsies for you guys. So every November, the state does its first output report of what the projected '25, '26 foundation aid would be for all districts based off of all the data we submitted that fall. So there's one in November, there's one in February, and then there's another one in May. So February, oh, excuse me, sorry. November just happened a couple of weeks ago. So I just wanted to show you where we're at in the variety that is Monroe 1 BOSsies. See, there's four districts that are in the boat of no increase if the formula stays as is. So they would be in that kind of hold harmless kind of group that we heard so much about last year. And then varying amounts at a few other districts. And you see, our initial run was a 1.86% increase, just a shade under $900,000. A lot of that has to do with enrollment changes for the district. So just wanted to show you that data in comparison of, there are some very wide disparities and changes amongst the districts in Monroe 1.
That, so are we to assume then that the districts that didn't change, the allocation didn't change, are not growing? The enrollments is?
That's one factor, yeah.
One factor, okay.
One factor, yep.
More to come on that.
You, you, you mentioned the, there's a formula allocation. And then when we didn't get that, what we were supposed to get, why did we not get what we're supposed to get?
In those previous years, because it was the constant back and forth between the negotiation, between the legislature and the governor of like how much we were going to allocate. Because really, the executive branch, you know, I shouldn't pick on the governor because there's been several of them since the foundation aid formulas come together, really holds all the cards in the budget negotiations. So it's, it's that constant trade-off. You want a little bit more for your districts in the foundation aid formula?
You gotta give me?
Here's what I want as part of the budget negotiations. So that is the end point of those budget discussions of how close those red and blue bars get to each other.
Anyway, like Brian said, we got excited for one year. They finally fully funded it and then that changed.
Right. So, good questions. So now Rockefeller Center report takeaways that came out. I'm not sure if everybody read the whole 314 pages of it. So I guess the best way I could describe, we will see come January of 2025. There's some many common sense changes for updating. One is replace free and reduced lunch as a poverty indicator. That's kind of outdated. There's a lot of other governmental statistics that are more accurate, so they made some recommendations there. Census data that is utilized is way outdated. It's from 2000. They recommended updating that. Because we are New York and New York City, they recommended CPI change to the Northeast United States versus the CPI for the entire country. They recommended some regional cost index changes. And to get really into the weeds, this is important, the expected local minimum and some district wealth factors. So right now, there is a bar of how low a district can go for how unwealthy they are, I think is the best way to say it. So there's a bar, can't go any lower than that. But you take that bar away, there's a lot of districts that are going to drop. That means more money for those districts. So you're, they're recommending saying, you want to see the true need for multiple districts, you got to take that expected local minimum and some of those wealth factors, you got to take that floor away and let it really see what happens. Also, one of the other specific things is, the whole formula is based on what does it cost to educate a student in a successful school? So they took a bunch of Regents exams, some 3-8 testing data, high-performing districts, they took their per pupil expenditure and averaged it. But they didn't average it perfectly. They took out the top 50%. So they took out the top 50% spending districts, then the left 50% is what they average for the per pupil. They recommended, well, if you're going to really come up with a true cost of a high-performing school, of a successful school, you got to include all of them. So put those districts back in, then do it. What's that going to do? That's going to raise the per pupil expenditure that everybody has to get to. That means more money into the formula, more money for the state to spend. One of the more interesting recommendations was eliminate the students with disabilities waiting in the formula. So right now, students with disabilities are weighted at 1.4. So when you look at our enrollment in the formula, every student with disability counts as a 1.4. They recommended move to a separate categorical funding stream. So pull out students with disabilities and special education funding out of foundation aid and move it into its own categorical funding stream. A lot of it was the advocacy around, New York State puts more requirements on to students with disabilities programs than the federal government under IDEA, so they should create a separate funding stream for it. My favorite part of the presentate, of the report was page 19. Zero, they, zero emission school bus transition. They alluded to, there is no way this formula could help districts fund that conversion. Report recommends state fully underwrite the cost of the conversion and you can't expect this formula and the allocations to pick up the cost of school districts going forward for that. That's, that's a separate expenditure and should be removed.
Carol, you got a question? Was it about the last bullet?
Yeah, not about the bus thing, but how would that affect our district? If, if they eliminate the, the waiting and separate it out?
So.
Because we have huge numbers.
It's a hypothetical formula, so they don't, they're just recommending creating something. So I don't know, yeah, what that would look like. So you remove those students and you put them in a different bucket. Naturally, that's going to lower the amount of foundation aid that we're going to get because those kids are coming out of this formula. You're shifting them to a new, yet-to-be-invented formula that will supposedly create a different aid revenue that would maybe offset that reduction or even give you more than that reduction in this formula category?
Okay, so we don't know.
Yeah. It's a long.
At least when it happens, I'll remember this moment.
Well, I mean, it kind of, I, I would think that it then would reward, if, if the formula's done right, would reward districts who do a good job and that's why you're getting so many students coming in with, with special education needs. And the 1.4 doesn't account for those students that are high, high needs, it's kind of averaging it out, which probably for a community that has a good program, you'll get more students and that's probably weighing down how much we're getting.
Right.
It's unfair.
That's what we're hoping. I think you're right.
But.
It's less like cost sharing.
Yeah.
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 I hope.
Potentially separate.
Yep. So we'll wait and see what the governor wishes to adopt come January from the report.
Hopefully they'll give us a choice. Do you want to go this way or?
I didn't put it on here, but the first, I mean, the front and center from the report too is, one is, it's very obvious, the first 100 pages are, we spend more money than any state in the union. They made that front and center. And number two, New York State has had significant enrollment decline. So if you're looking at this from outside education or, those are the two things that are going to stand out the most in the first 100 pages. The next 100 pages are all about process. The last 100 pages are all about their recommendations, so.
According to the governor, that's because of the weather, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But our students are well.
Palm trees and taxes if you're.
Our, our students are very sought after, I think, as a state. People around the country want New York State students because of our education, I think.
Does it, I mean, from what you were saying, this seemed like that this report would favor budgets? Am I misunderstanding there?
No, you're not.
Yeah.
We think if they were to take all of the recommendations or even some of them that, like Brian said, I think they'd have to put money into the system, more money into the system. But which one, which recommendations would they take? Will they do one this year and two next year and three the year after? We don't know that yet, you know? So the conversation around students with disabilities, that could be one that they say, we need more time to investigate and really develop a formula that does take into consideration the needs of students and not that just every student that has an IEP is the same, which is not true. And so that, those are the things that they might look at.
So who like commissioned the report?
I'll let Brian answer that. Who commissioned the report?
So the governor as part of the budget and legislature agreed to it. She funded it as part of the budget to give $2 million to the Rockefeller Center to study this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yep.
Thank you.
The report.
So I know many of you have probably heard about the healthcare increases that are coming countywide for both RASH 1 and RASH 2. Thought I'd take a moment to try to explain it in two parts to everybody, kind of maybe really break it down to its simplest form. So first, I want to talk about the Medicare plans, our Aetna plans impacted by the Inflation Reduction Act. So that was way back in memory because that was like two years ago. Probably very few people remember that what got passed. So it's just a major investment in clean energy, childcare, healthcare, some education and tax cuts was what the Inflation Reduction Act was. Most significant change to Medicare prescription rules since Part D was introduced in 2005. This did not come out though until August. So passed a couple of years ago, Center for Medicare/Medicaid just released in August what was changing. So what's it do? Reduce seniors' out-of-pocket prescription costs. It shifts manufacturer subsidies to the future, shifts federal subsidies, which I have a graph which could show you all these shifts and why the cost has gone up. So net result for start in January 1, 2025, significant retiree benefit improvement and significant premium increases. So it eliminates the coverage gap is what Medicare did. Reduced the true out-of-pocket maximum and how quickly it's reached. It reduced manufacturers' discounts. It shifted federal reinsurance to per employee, per month subsidy. Like I said, didn't come out with guidance requirements until August. This is a 90% increase in cost for the Webster Plan because we had a prescription drug plan that saw the greatest impact. This is still better than the comparable Exelis plans. This was an entire change in the plan. Wasn't the same, this isn't the same plan that RASH 1 went to last August. It had to be fundamentally changed. Every one of these plans had to be fundamentally changed because of the new law and the regulations and rules that. Every one of these plans had to be fundamentally changed because of the new law and the regulations and rules that came with it.
So this just gets handed to you?
Correct. Here's the best explanation on this graph that it could possibly come up with. On the left is 2024, on the right is 2025. The purple is the beneficiary. That's, that's the consumer. Red is the plan, that you could call us because we're the plan sponsor. The manufacturer is the teal and the government is the blue. So last year, which is still this year, 2024, there's four phases. 2025 is now down to three phases. So they've reduced it. Now, if you add up all the colors on the left side, the beneficiary was at 150%. We'll just use easy math. It goes down now to 125. So they're paying 25% less because of the way prescription drugs are. It's a huge benefit change for the retiree, the consumer, okay? The plan was paying 100% in 2024. Pan, plan is now paying 125%. So that's the cost shift towards us. The manufacturer was giving 70% rebates to offset in 2024. They are now giving 30% in 2025. Of course, the federal government was at 80% in 2024. They are down to 60% in 2025. So it's a massive readjustment of Medicare and a shifting of the costs onto the plan sponsors and away from three of the four groups that pay into it.
To the employers.
Correct.
Right. So we want to employ more people. We want to cover them, but we get hit the most as employers. That makes governmental sense.
Companies. Which is what it was, it was, you know,
Right.
marketed as.
There's some rules going out into the future about negotiation for prescription prices that may shift some of that towards the pharmaceutical side, to the manufacturer. But, you know, I thought I had a three-year lock-in on rates and we were all excited about that as a county. And then this happened, so not even going to pretend to guess what might come down the pipe next. So this is the huge change on the retiree's side that has such a significant impact on us. So we have about 1,000 retirees that are in this plan. But it just doesn't affect Aetna. It's steamrolls across all the plans. You won't see the zero, zero dollar premium billboards on 490 anymore.
And this isn't just education. I think every single chamber, chamber commerce meeting that I've had since August, they've mentioned this. And during every WEDA meeting, Barry Howard has updated the amount of time. That's all he's doing right now is meeting with members of the chamber and on healthcare.
So that is as simple as I can make the Medicare change for everybody for, to wrap our heads around it. Next is our RASH 2 plan going up 14-4 for next year, okay? A couple of reasons why. Significant increases due to higher labor costs. We are really feeling the impact of what I would call the traveling nurse explosion of doubling salaries to keep people in the industry. I know my family was affected by it. My brother, brother-in-law upped and left the state because of the recruitment that was going on for significant more money. So that is a huge cost increase we are seeing from all of the point-of-sale doctors' offices, any kind of healthcare office, the labor costs are through the roof. Outpatient surgeries, increased utilization and cost per procedure, significantly high. Inpatient, increased admissions and length of stay. There are several new high-cost drugs that we're seeing and increased utilization. And more so than ever, the RASH 2 plan has saw a huge increase, what we call high-cost claimants. And a lot of that has to do with technological investments equal higher costs. You know, a lot more replacements of joints and things like that. More cancer drugs, which is all good stuff. It's, you know, you know, it's hard to knock it, but it comes with a cost. I mean, the research and development is what they're trying, all these companies try to recover. So, and then we saw a couple of transplants as well. So the high-cost claimants are really having a huge impact on the consortium to, as a whole. So it was kind of a one-two punch in August and in September. But right now, our estimated impact just on actives is probably going to be around a $5 million cost increase. And that the retiree impact is about $1 million. Just rough rollover of, without even looking at the details of getting through open enrollment that just closed. But that's the kind of numbers that this has impact on districts. 14-4 is the largest year-over-year increase since RASH was started. And it's not looking too good for the coming years too. Because on Wednesday, I go to our board meeting and this year, 2024, is already fiscally struggling to keep up with the claim expenses we're seeing. So we'll, we'll, we could talk more about that through the budget process. But I just wanted to get out in front and give you guys some early numbers. ERS is also going up 1.3% over last year. So that's about a half a million dollar increase right now, but this is all based on salary projections. So just rolling that over. TRS probably going to land around 10%. But, so it's even, but contractual salaries naturally go up and that's what salaries drives TRS. So even when it's flat, the rate's flat, the increase still goes up because it's based on reported salaries. So a lot of movement there. It could have been worse. We'll, we'll take it's a neutral. But just kind of throwing some numbers out there that we might be looking at, just wanted to point those out to you as well. But just benefit increases is a 4.16% before we even look at doing anything else on the budget. And so this is a theme that isn't just Webster. This is going to be every district in the county. I know Flash, the Finger Lakes area healthcare plan too, is also in this very similar boat. So some other budget items just to go with, sales tax revenue, looking at that, that's remaining the same. Interest rates remaining high for earning a few extra dollars, so we might take a look at that. They're not dropping as fast as everybody predicted, but we'll see. The next few quarters will really tell us something there. What, maybe we could squeeze a few dollars there. Expenditures, we have no contract negotiations to settle, so there's no guesswork there. Minimum wage is going up again, another 50 cents. This is driving a lot of social security and Medicare costs for us greatly because it's also driving the people that are right in front of minimum wage. And that also has a domino effect to raising the pension expenditures as well. So we just got to balance everything at the end of the process. So, you know, funding available minus what we can do equals our budget. So next up, right now, I'm gathering all the data points for our tax cap calculation. We'll talk about our reserve plan at the workshop in January, go over that more in depth. I think that'll be very important as part of this budget process. And then we are preparing our thought exchange to go out in January as well. Going to be a slight change this year, myself and Ashley Sikola and Joe Monamero looking at that. We're actually going to add a question about the conversion to the EV bus mandate and put it out there for people if they have any questions or what further information we could provide for the community on that.
I thank you for making this so clear, honestly.
Yeah, the healthcare changes are very complicated. And it, it took me a while to process that Medicare change and, and fully grasp that in a short amount of time.
Okay, thanks.
Not done yet, though. Got two tax actuaries to, to approve. So the first one up is 1600 Nine Mile Fairport Road. I pulled up a map because it is at the very edge of the district, just so you could see here. Going to kind of zoom in. It is, here's Clark Animal Hospital, 250 in Atlantic. This piece of property here. This is an old one. You might, if you've driven down here, these are now mixed-use apartments that are going up, kind of townhomes as well. That is this property here, which is associated with this group over here. So if you keep going a little farther south, you'll see there's the Y. This is the border of the district right here. And then Penfield over here, we balance a little over here. But just because it's such an abstract property that doesn't have anything to anchor to it, I thought I'd show everybody where, what we're talking about.
And this doesn't have anything to do with us, but is that where Costco was going?
It does have to do with us.
It kind, it kind of, like, we weren't the ones who, like, voted it down or whatever, but that's where Costco-
No, Costco would be in our district.
It would be in our school district, not the towns.
Correct. It'd be the town of Penfield, Webster Central School District, and they were looking at right here.
I, for some reason, didn't think we went that far, so, okay.
That would be a bonus for taxes.
This Y is, the, the Y is actually in the district.
The Y is actually, okay.
Yeah. But it's, because it's not for profit, it's not on the rolls, so nobody ever looks. But it, it is still in our district.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that's interesting that it affects our district, you know, but we didn't, our, our folks didn't get a chance to weigh into that decision.
Because it's the town, because it's the town, so some people did, like-
Right, right. We live in Penfield, yeah.
But you're right.
But yes, technically, that's where those overlaps are funky. It's weird.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we do have, Brian and I actually have had many conversations with the town of Penfield as well. I meet with Jeff every month and actually, we just had a meeting with myself, Jeff, Lean Houts, who's the supervisor in Penfield, and then the Tasha Potter over at Penfield, the superintendent there, and Dan Driffl, who was Penfield School District's Brian. And then we met with the two new tax assessment people from, from Penfield. So we had a really, it was a great meeting.
So, yeah, the first one up is just, we have no refunds on this one. So it would be a recommendation for us to approve the 1600 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road tax actuary settlement.
Would we do them separate or?
Separate, yeah.
Oh, we do, okay. Okay, so motion to approve the 1600 Fairport Nine Mile Point resolution. So moved Carol.
Second.
Second Maria. All in favor?
Aye.
And then continuing on with the town of Penfield theme tonight, we have another settlement for the JP Morgan Chase branch that is by the Eastway Wegmans, right there across from Applebee's. So this one goes back a couple of years. So no refunds under this settlement agreement as well, with a slight reduction moving forward in the assessment of the property. So we're in agreement with the town of Penfield to also enter into this agreement.
Okay. All right, with that, motion to approve the JP Morgan Chase Bank Tax Cert Resolution. So moved Linda, second. Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
Are you done?
I am done.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to do a policy manual quick. This is our second read. It's been a long process, but we've done the first reads all the way through. There were no other changes back from Erie One BOSI, so there's really nothing, since we've done the first reads, to prove that's different. And it's been a long process, but it's been a good process. I think it was time to move on to the system. Erie One has really walked us through. We are literally, literally have everything covered imaginable, so, yeah. And will be in the future. So they keep us up to date. So as things change, laws change, regulations change, they let us know so that we can, it's bing bang boom done, so worth every penny. All right, you want to say something?
No, I just want to say this is so much better.
Yes.
You know, having taken place, I didn't do it, you guys did it, but I observed it and was grateful you did it. And, and I, because I had read the previous stuff, I appreciated how much effort and how much better this is.
Took us three years.
It was, wasn't it? I knew it was about two and a half, but we are-
Almost three, yeah.
Covered for everything under the sun, so.
It's also, it's also more cost-effective because the way that we had been doing it, we had an attorney that was continuing to look at our policies. And every time a new policy or something changed at state ad and they brought it to us, we had to bring it to the attorney to, it's, so it was much, this will be more cost-effective moving forward, now that it's done, so.
Yeah, very true.
And so if you needed to know something, we could do, it's not like we have to read this whole thing, right?
No, and thank you to Heather that would be an easy access.
It's there to be consulted for.
Yeah, no, correct. Heather's helping us with that, so there'll be easy access to it, searchable type, keyword type stuff, which just will be easier for everyone.
It'll go up as an entire document on the website like it is now and, and give Heather some time to go and add it.
It's not going to go right, I'm sorry, I didn't mean it.
Any Word doc, it'll go up.
That's okay. But yes, it will be searchable, it will be, yeah.
Right. But I think the process that we went through, because, you know, we took sections and we workshopped to them. So that helped last year, so. And then when we brought it in, gave it to Erie One and they, after our first read, and they saw no additions or had, we didn't have to take anything, that's why we didn't have to workshop it again or do anything.
Pretty impressive.
So that was great for us, so.
Yep. All right, yeah, so with that, motion to approve the Webster CSD Board of Education Policy Manual, second read. Make it official. So moved Maria, second. Michelle, all in favor?
Aye.
Yay. All right, that moves us onto board member highlights. If anyone has anything they want to share.
Well, we went to see the diary of Aunt Frank, which was amazing, and Thomas. And we visited Plank South, which we mentioned, but which is always amazing to be able to see what your presentation was in reality. That was great. And, and you mentioned the coffee cart. I missed it on Monday. I somehow went off my radar, but-
That's okay.
Yeah, but that coffee cart is so much fun. Linda, you guys just do an amazing job with it, yeah. I went to the 2004, I, I don't know, not as a board member, but the 2004 Thomas reunion, the 20-year reunion.
You said you were going to go.
And, yeah, and it was so great to see people that are teaching in the district now and that have children in the district and, yeah. And even some students who I was worried about are okay now, so. That was good, really good, yeah. I was like, yeah, so it was good.
I just have a couple of updates. I just wanted to let everybody know that the legislative committee has come up with all their position papers. I can share them. And they're also preparing to, for the Ledge Breakfast, which is always in February, where we talk to our legislators. So they zoomed this week and gave the assistance of the legislators the walkdown of what we are really looking for in Monroe County. A lot of it comes down to foundation aid, more clarification on the zero emission buses. It's all the stuff that we've been talking about for years and years, so that's going on. I will send an email with all the position papers on anything that you ever wanted to imagine. So there was that. District operations was very interesting. It was about the zero emission buses as well, but it actually was the electric company officials that came. And what I took away from it is they really have no idea.
I was going to say, did they answer questions?
They answered nothing. It was a giant, no, it was a giant, I felt like it was a giant loop of, here's a great ques, oh, that's a great question.
Nothing has changed.
No, so- No, so it, it's a little concerning, so again, more to come on that. Strategic planning, we met, I think that was last week. It feels like it was a month ago. So again, those are subcommittees, our artificial intelligence, electric vehicles. And we have a new subcommittee called the Anxious Generation, which will look at cell phones, social media, play. Erin is going to spearhead that and, and work a little bit on that. So there'll be more to come on that. Artificial intelligence, there'll be more meetings coming up after the new year. And electric buses, I know they're waiting for a report, so once that comes, there'll be more information on that. What else do I have? Oh, the Webster Health and Education Network, they had a a project they put on all of the buildings, protective vector signs, they're positive messages, they're on the entrances of the buildings. They're also on playgrounds. So that, it was a partnership with the district. All the signs have been completed and there will be in the come, in the, in the new year selfies with the signs and that will go out as a big promotion just to show, showcase the partnership between the district and the Webster Health Education Network and get more name recognition out in the community. So look for that in the coming year. Hang on, sorry. The one thing I'm going to say is the, the Student Parent Band, we went to see them. I have to tell you, that was pretty incredible. I've only been to it, this is only the second time I've seen it in my time on the board. You have to go see it next year. They are unbelievable. There are some people that have been in it for over 20 years and they're unbelievable. And their kids aren't even in it anymore, but they still do it. And it's that sense of, and it goes back to our goals and it's all about sense of community and that's what truly came through. So I highly recommend that.
Can I piggyback on that, just a little bit more explanation? So it ranges from ages ten, nine, I'd say sort of fourth graders or nine or 10, we'll say nine or 10, up through if someone's in their 80s that's on this band. Well, the cool part about that was that they usually, they're, for 30, it's over, this is their 30th year for doing it. And it started way back, Larry Neeke and Al Christensen started it, and it's still going. And usually they do it in March. This year, because they were presenting this concept to the New York State Music Association Conference here in Rochester, they decided to move it up because then they took the entire band to do the presentation, which is unheard of at one of those conferences. They have the whole band there and presenting it. And the other cool part that I wanted to piggyback on that with is that we now have a Warrior Family Band, so it's on both sides. And Jolene Harrigan was there to present how she started it and all the different things that you would never think of that go into getting it, something like that off the ground. So it was really, it's such a cool presentation. I liked it. The breakfast is February 1st.
Yes.
Right, we heard that. That's the, that's the Saturday breakfast.
Favorite day.
But at least a lot of them will show, will be there, so it makes it.
They'll be there.
Yeah, so it'll be good. Yeah, that's it.
The only other thing I do want to, I do want to recognize Brian Freeman tonight because the budget stuff that he has been doing is deep already. Usually it starts this time of year, but it, this is a different year. It's a little bit more challenging and, you know, having somebody like Brian that has his leadership and his experience has been huge for us as a district. We're going to do everything we can to, to manage this budget, to take on these challenges and to do what we can to not, you know, cut programs and things like that. We will go one step at a time and we're working with all of our unions and I know Dave's working with that as well. This will be part of our Together Committee meeting. But again, we, we're going to do this together and we'll, we'll get through it. I know we will, but it will be a little bit different and much appreciated leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
All right, that's good for that. Consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved Jeff, second, Maria, all in favor? Aye. There are no speakers, so with that, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Thank you, Carol. This was moved by Carol, second. Linda, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Have a good night.